President Broussard.
Here.
Vice President Cavelllo.
Here.
Commissioner Torgerson. He is here and he is muted. I see his picture.
Here.
Commissioner Bowe.
President.
Commissioner Schiffer.
Here.
Commissioner Rithaler.
Here.
Commissioner Curra.
Here.
Commissioner Francisco. I see he is also online. And Commissioner Wildcat.
Here.
President Broussard, we have a quorum. Just, just so you know, the liaisons currently are being appointed. They will not be present at this meeting. I'll find out soon who those new liaisons will be. So Commissioner Lovinaw will stay the liaison for the governor's office and he is on as well.
Thank you, Nick. All right, if unofficially welcome you and then Nick, if you'd like to do the more formal welcome, you can carry on.
Thank you, President Broussard. Welcome to the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting of the Wyoming Gaming Commission. The primary mission of the Wyoming Gaming Commission is the protection of the wagering public and the health, safety, and welfare of the participants in all lawful gaming and paramutual activity. Individuals who wish to address the commission will be recognized and called on by the president to speak. After the president has recognized you, please clearly state your name and the name of the organization you represent prior to addressing the commission. All comments, questions, and responses must flow through the president by addressing the president each time you wish to speak. This procedure ensures an orderly flow of discussion during the commission meeting. All meetings of the governing body of an agency are public meetings open to the public, except as otherwise provided pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen four, four oh three A. This meeting is being held via Zoom and available to watch live via the YouTube link. The commission may open an executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen four, four oh five A. Inclusion on the agenda does not necessarily constitute commission action. That is all, Mr. President.
All right, we'll move to item one A, if everyone, item one C, if everyone would like to join me with the pledge of allegiance. Appreciate it.
A pledge of allegiance. Due to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in all, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two A will adopt today's agenda. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Commissioner.
So move.
Second.
Got a first and a second? And any discussion about today's agenda? Not seeing any, we will call the vote. All in favor of adopting today's agenda, say aye.
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 Thank you. So has everyone had a chance to look through the consent list? Is there anyone who would like to remove something from the consent list after reviewing? Not seeing anything, we will make them, we will accept a motion to adopt the consent list. Have a, have a first and a second. Any discussion regarding the consent list? Consent list. Not seeing any, we'll call the vote. All in favor of adopting the consent list, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. We will now move, jump to item.
President Broussard, now we, now that we've adopted the consent list, we have to approve the items on the consent list. So we got to read, or I can read each one of the items and then we can get a motion to approve the consent list, not just the list itself.
Okay, so you're talking about all of nine?
Correct. It'd be on page thirteen.
You want to go ahead and read that for me?
Certainly. President Broussard, the consent list includes item number four A, the minutes of the November twenty-first and twenty-second, twenty twenty-four annual fall meeting. Item number four B, the minutes of the December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four special meeting. Item number five, general commission business, the financial wagering report and wager activity report. Item number nine A, AGS software, HHR Exacta, two new game themes and associated math models. Item nine B, Aristocrat software, HHR, on the Ainsworth platform, five new game themes and associated math models. Item nine C, gaming art software, HHR Exacta, one new game theme and associated math models. Item nine D, Incredible Tech software, HHR Exacta, three new game themes and associated math models. Item nine E, IGT software, HHR. This is both Exacta and, and Ainsworth. Five new game themes and associated math models on Exacta. Fifteen new game themes and associated models on Ainsworth. Item nine F is the Every software, HHR, on Exacta, one new game theme and associated math model. Item nine G is Kunami software, HHR. Two new game themes on the Ainsworth platform and associated math model. Item nine H, Paramax software, HHR. One new game theme and associated math model on the Paramax system. Item nine I, Light and Wonder software, HHR. Eight new game themes and associated math models on the Ainsworth platform. Item nine J, Ainsworth, HHR, two new game themes and associated math models on the Ainsworth platform. And item nine K, Blueberry software, HHR. Two new game themes and associated math models on the Exacta platform. And that is everything on the consent list.
Thank you. So we need a motion to, yeah, go ahead, make a motion to approve consent as presented and presented. Thank you.
Mr.
Second by.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Not seeing any, we'll call the vote. All in favor of, the motion is to approve the items as presented on the consent list. Nick, is that not the right motion?
That would be correct.
Okay. All in favor of approving the items on the consent list, state aye.
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 If there's anyone opposed, say no. All right, thank you. So we'll now move to the president, vice president report. So I don't have anything to report with the exception that we just returned, a couple of us returned from Tucson. And as many of you know, we're going to have an election next meeting in the, at the end of the meeting. Those of you who are considering becoming an officer, I'd highly recommend considering going and, and learning in Tucson. It's a incredible resource. If you have questions regarding the details of that, I'd love to, I'd talk anytime to anyone about it. But highly recommend it to commissioners who are just getting on or would like to learn more about in specific, the paramutual side of what we do. Do you have anything, Cactus, you'd like to add? If not, we'll move to director's report when the IT guy switches hats.
Thank you, President Broussard. I just have a few things to go over. I attended the racing symposium in Tucson as well. It was fantastic to be able to network and meet a lot of directors and industry experts from across the nation, even across the world. On the last thirty days or so, we've been pretty busy internally, been scouring the website, updating forums, reviewing all the information that we have that goes out of our office to make sure that everything is up to date. Real briefly, I just wanted to let you know that, and I sent this out to you all. At the end of December, eight hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy cents was transferred to the LIZRA account. That's the tip over amount. During the December twenty-third meeting, staff was directed to go through the suspension letters and correct suspension letters that were sent out. The template that we were using had a typographical error and it was showing a twenty twenty-seven reaccreditation date and that should have been twenty twenty-six. All of those have been gone through, corrected, and sent back out. So that is done. Thank you. The other, this kind of rolls into the legislative report, if you want me to continue with that. So currently, right now, this was two days ago, so I think there's a couple more, but right now there's seven total bills that have been filed with the legislature for this upcoming session. House Bill eighty-seven, which is the consolidation of gaming. That bill does a lot of renumbering to try to put everything that the gaming commission, within the gaming commission's purview in one section of the statute book. House Bill eighty-five is the local approval for simulcasting. Generally speaking, that bill grants cities and towns the ability to approve simulcasting locations that are within city limits and the county to approve the county or the OTB locations that are within the county. House Bill one thirty-eight is the gaming commission amendments bill. Also generally speaking, that bill is to, that is the bill that looks to creating a professional board instead of the volunteer board. House Bill fifty-four is the breakage bill. That bill is designed to take the breakage from the operators and revert that money to the state versus the operators. House Bill sixty-two, or I'm sorry, House Bill one sixty-two is the iGaming bill. It has been reintroduced and filed this year. Senate File one sixteen is an anti-money laundering bill. And House Bill one thirty-nine is the interstate export of Wyoming horse racing. That would allow the commission to enter into agreements to conform with HEISA if any of the tracks wanted to export and accept wagers out of state on thoroughbred races. All of the bills that are being filed, we'll track them internally. I had sent a link to you all right on our website. If you go to to the resources tab, there's a legislative action that gets updated real time. As soon as changes are made, I'm updating that. You can click right on those links and see the, the bills without having to try to sort through hundreds and hundreds of bills on Wildleg's website. I believe that is all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Nick. Appreciate that. So, and item number six, is this something we'll do in public or do we need to go in executive session for that?
President Broussard, I'm scrolling here real quick to get to that one.
It's a settlement agreement. And I know we, we made a procedural error on six B. Is that something we need, we can do in this setting or do we need to go in executive session?
President Broussard, we can, we can do six B real quick and then go back to six A.
And what, what are the, what's the action required on six A?
So six A is just a, it would be a presentation and the commission's acceptance of the settlement agreement or to enter into the settlement agreement with Mr. Christensen.
Okay. Thank you. So six A would be to, or for the commission to consider a settlement agreement with a Mr. Ryan Christensen for some medication violations that were referred to the commission. The Attorney General's Office on the prosecuting side has worked with Mr. Christensen and his legal counsel to come up with a, an agreement, more like a plea agreement. Sure. So that's what that would be for you all to consider.
So it's, it's something we can do in the public. We don't, unless there's some legal discussion.
You, you can do that in the public. We've done, we've done those in the public in the past.
All right. Well, let's, let's go ahead with A then and get knocked out if that's okay.
Okay.
Mike, is that, is that okay?
Okay.
Yes, Mr. President, we'll do six A. That can be done in open session. If there are any legal or statutory questions where the commission needs legal advice, we can go into executive session, but we probably won't need to.
All right, thank you. I read the settlement and I'm fine with it. So right now we need a motion to accept the settlement from the commission, correct?
Mr. President, Mr. Marvel with the AG's office, he's walking in right now. He'll present this and he'll give you the background and everything on it and then you can make the motion and move from there.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning.
There's the little green button on. There you go.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the commission. As indicated, we are here today on a settlement agreement stipulation in order of discipline. My understanding is you have been provided this previously, so what I will do is just run through it very briefly, if that's okay with you. Essentially, this involves, you know, two, two separate horses, the same trainer, obviously, with Cash Twenty-three and All Lives Matter. You know, there was some formal discipline taken by the stewards in relationship to both of these horses. And at the end of the day, essentially what we had come to the conclusion with or what, what was offered and what was come to the settlement, the initial fines and penalty imposed on Mr. Christensen in relationship to the thousand dollar fine for Cash Twenty-three, also the disqualification from that horse in that race. And very similar in relationship to All Lives Matter, which there was a thousand dollar fine. The, the additional disciplinary measure imposed by the stewards in relationship to the second horse was that Mr. Christensen was suspended for thirty days and additionally, again, that horse was disqualified from the race. Based on negotiations between the, the settle, or between the parties, it was concluded that essentially what, what would take place is that those fines and, and penalties imposed by the stewards, those would be sufficient and we'd go ahead and agree to not pursue any further fines or fees in relationship to that. So that is essentially the gist of the settlement agreement that has been reached between the parties. So I am here today to ask that, that go ahead and be ratified, that the settlement agreement between the parties be ratified and the order be entered. Is that? And so I'll take any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Do we need to ask any questions at this point? Do we need to ask any questions at this point? Guys on Zoom, do you have any questions? Okay, so we'll, we'll entertain a motion to ratify the settlement. I have, Cactus is going to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to ratify the settlement as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
And who was that?
Commissioner Torgerson.
Oh, thank you. All right. We have a first and a second. Any questions regarding the settlement? Anyone on Zoom? No hands? Okay. If not seeing any, we'll call the vote. All in favor of ratifying the settlement, say aye.
Aye.
If there's anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President, commissioners.
And so, Nick, the, the item 6B, we, we actually voted on something we didn't have a motion for. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. President. Item 6B, on December 23, 2024, the commission heard four separate appeal requests for suspensions from the Wyoming bred program. During that meeting, a suspension was upheld for the horse Isadelight, docket number 240168. As staff was reviewing the, the meeting to prepare minutes, they noted that there was discussion and there was a vote to uphold the suspension, but there was no actual formal motion. There was, there was discussion that there was thought that there was a motion, but in the end, there was no motion. So at this time, we would just need a motion to ratify that suspension. And then that would kind of clear, clean it up.
So is there anyone here today that wasn't on the December meeting? So if anyone needs, do we need any more explanation? We know what, we recall what was discussed at that time? Good. All right. So at this point, we'll entertain a motion to ratify the suspension. Okay. Commissioner Rithaler?
Yes, I would make that motion to ratify what we did.
We have a second with, with Commissioner Cavella. Any further discussion? Not seeing any hands, nothing here. We'll call the vote. All in favor of ratifying the suspension, say aye.
Aye.
If there's anyone opposed, say no. All right. Thank you. So that is item six. Moving right along. Nick, are you going to present, or Mike?
President Broussard, Mr. Steinberg will present, 7A and B.
Mike, take it away.
Thank you, President Broussard. If I might, real quick, just throw one real brief bit of information in before I get into A. In the November meeting, commissioners, you asked us to look into this information on limiting in sports wagering. Just wanted to give you a real quick update on that. Director Lara Mindy and I have reached out to all of the operators. We've had several meetings with the majority of the operators. We are gathering information to bring back to you. We hope to have some concrete data to give to you in the next meeting. Just wanted to give you a real brief update that we are in the process of getting that information and have had some meetings.
Was that regarding what Spanky presented?
Yes. Yes. The limiting of, of patron wagering.
Okay. Thank you. You have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah. Question is, would they change it if Wyoming was the only one?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
If Wyoming's the only state that says we do not allow limiting, would they change it if you're voting in Wyoming, betting in Wyoming? Did they, or did they just say, this is how it is?
Well, President Broussard, Commissioner Rithaler, I, I guess that's kind of a difficult question to answer right now. I think when, when we present more detailed information in, in March, you might get a clearer understanding. I guess the long and short answer is limiting isn't as clear cut as we may have thought it was. There's, there's multiple different reasons for limiting, some of which have some pretty realistic reasons for it, maybe. Might be a, a.
Okay. Well, that's what I just.
A reasonable explanation. But we're still gathering that information. We'll have some better data for you in, in March.
Thank you.
And at least we'll be able to give you some information to, to make a more informed decision.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. President Broussard, item 7A is a new vendor application for, excuse me, Catalyst Sports. On October 17, the commission received an application for Catalyst Sports, Inc., Wyoming Company for Online Sports Wagering Vendor Permit. You received all the information in your packet. Let's see. They, sorry, I lost my place here. They are currently licensed in more than three jurisdictions within the United States. All of their information is in order. There's nothing in their background that was out of place, and they appear to meet all the statutory requirements for permitting as a vendor in Wyoming.
Thank you. At this point, we'll entertain a motion to approve the new vendor license for Catalyst Sports. Do we have anybody on Zoom that wants to make a motion?
Commissioner Schiffer would move to accept the application of Catalyst Sports, Inc.
Thank you, Dan. Do we have a second? Did you get that?
Francis.
Okay, cool. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding, regarding this licensee? Uh-oh. Screen to black. Oh, that is green. Not seeing any, we'll call the vote. All in favor of approving the new vendor license, state aye.
Aye.
Sorry, sorry. Dan, you had a question. I'd like to get that before we.
Okay. Really, it's not applicable to the vote, but President Broussard, my recollection is that one of the points that the gaming study made was that we were misplaced in relying on the fact that these applications have been approved in other jurisdictions in approving our, the applications to us. And, you know, I, I think that's got some merit to it because, you know, there could be states that are really not looking at the criteria that they should be as to whether or not these applications should be approved. And, you know, it's my thought that we need to look a little further and see if we can establish a better criteria than what, what other states have done in order to approve applications to us. So I just think we need to bring that up, and at some point, we need to kind of talk about the criteria that we're using for these applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, do you want to address that?
President Broussard, Commissioner Schiffer, and that is true, and, and I just would like to say that that's not the only criteria that we use. We also do look at the key personnel. They do have to go through the background investigation. They have to meet criteria for their individual background. They have to meet, you know, whether they would individually qualify to hold a license in the state of Wyoming as individuals. So that is more than just whether there are three other jurisdictions. But that is what's in statute, so it does, it is what Spectrum keyed on. So I agree, it does kind of sound bad or look a little suspect at times, but we do look at a little bit more than that. It's not just a box that's checked. They're, they're licensed in three other jurisdictions, so we pass it on to you. There is a, there is a deeper dive than that.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. Appreciate your explanation.
President Broussard, if I may, an easy way to remember that, though, is that they have to be licensed in three even to qualify. So if they're not licensed in three, they can't even apply with us. But if they are licensed in three, then they can apply with us, and then we go through our own processes to, to vet those and do due diligence backgrounds and corporate backgrounds and everything else before they're presented.
Thank you. Does that, does that answer your question? Dan?
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate the explanation.
Thank you for that, Nick. So at this point, any other comments or questions before we move on? Not seeing any, we will call the vote again. All in favor of approving the license for Catalyst Sports, say aye.
Aye.
If there's anyone opposed, say no. All right. Thank you. Michael, you have NYX also.
President Broussard, item 7B is a vendor amendment for NYX Digital Gaming. They currently hold a vendor permit. They have since 2021. They are in good standing. They have requested to add to their current vendor permit to allow for a new service of And for those of you that don't know what that is, the geolocation is the service that determines or checks to ensure that a person placing a wager is within the confines of the state of Wyoming and not within a location that's not allowed for wagering. So not within tribal lands, but within the four corners of the state of Wyoming. So they are asking to add that to their already approved permit, because they were not originally permitted to offer that service. They have gone through all of the GLI testing for that product that, that they have. They have passed all that testing. They have gone through the state and done location testing with their product, and all of that testing has passed as well.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions regarding geolocating before we make a motion? We all clearly understand it. Yeah, all right. Okay, so at this point, we'll entertain a motion to approve the amendment to NYX permit. Anyone on Zoom likes, I'll give you a second. Y'all are a minute. Anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the NYX amendment to allow for the geolocating.
Thank you, Commissioner Torgensen. Do we have a second? Thank you. Commissioner Curra, any questions or comments regarding this applicant or permit? Not seeing any, we'll call the vote. All in favor of approving the amendment to NYX, state aye.
Aye.
If you disagree, say no. Okay, moving on. Thank you. Skills-based amusement games, item eight, new vendor license.
President Broussard, the next item is a skill-based amusement game vendor application the commission received on June 28 of 2023 from HungFi Gaming LLC. HungFi Gaming LLC is registered with the Secretary of State as a Wyoming-based LLC. When we received the application, it was incomplete. That's why the dates, it's not, this is not within the 60-day window from that date. We received the application and the license fee, but we were missing the background forms and fingerprints and all of the required plans that are outlined in rule. So I worked with the, the vendor back and forth. We finally got all of the plan, the plans worked out, and completed submission towards the end of November. At this time now, the, the submission is complete. HungFi Gaming LLC plans to vend the previously approved vanilla skill-based amusement games. We have completed the criminal history portion of the background and found no disqualifiers in that. They have paid their fees, and their plans conform with the rules of the Wyoming Gaming Commission. Staff would recommend approval of HungFi Gaming to become a licensed skill-based amusement game vendor in the state of Wyoming.
Thank you. At this point, yep. Commissioner Rithaler?
Thank you, Mr. President. I see on their questionnaire, county, place of birth, county, state, Wyoming, in the country of China.
President Broussard, this form has now been adjusted. When we built this form, this is an online submittable form, and that's a required field. They don't have states in China. So when, when I talked to them, I had them put Wyoming.
Oh, okay.
So it would, because without, without it being filled in, it won't allow you to move forward, so.
But I, it just seems out of place.
It is. It'll be, it is corrected now. That was one of the reasons why we've been scouring forms as well.
Thank you. No social security number, nothing. Okay.
President Broussard, actually, you'll see in the packet that it's a bunch of stars. If you look at page, it'd be page 81. Right there. Yep. On the, on the right side of your paper, halfway down. See the stars there where it says social security number? That's actually because it's masked. So we have that internally.
Oh, you have?
Yeah, we have it internally, but it, it masks it when it's submitted to make sure that it's compliant with.
I don't mean to be.
Good questions.
Because of China, but, you know, you hear so much about that.
Good questions.
Okay, so we'll entertain a motion to approve the new vendor license at this point. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Cavella, we have a, any seconds?
Second.
Okay. Was that Commissioner Torgensen?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Questions now regarding the vendor or the process? Nick, how many does that bring us to now, new vendors?
This would bring us to 17.
17 vendors.
17 vendors.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone before we call the vote? All right, we'll call the vote. All in favor of approving the vendor license?
Hello.
Dan, you have a question?
Oh, thank you, President Broussard. Before, I just don't, apparently, you're not seeing my hand raised or, I'm not sure.
See a big finger.
Yeah, there we go. Okay, now, this is kind of an interesting thing going on here. Because in the past, we seem to have vendors who were either based in Wyoming or based in South Dakota or Nebraska or somewhere around here. This vendor seems to be totally based in New York. His, their assets are all in New York. They seem to have a mailbox, et cetera, location in Cheyenne that they're operating out of. And, you know, I just question whether if, if people who play their, the games that they put out there actually are skillful and recover, you know, a lot of proceeds from playing those games, whether or not, you know, we can, those people playing those games or the state can collect the monies to pay off the winnings if there's really no assets in Wyoming to cover those winnings or other obligations that they may have to the state or the players or other, other creditors. So, you know, it's just, I don't know, you know, if we've had an application like this before, we may have, and I may have overlooked it, but I'd just like staff to kind of comment on what's in place to, to deal with these kind of contingencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schiffer. Nick, you want to address that?
President Broussard, Commissioner Schiffer, so this isn't the first applicant that we had, actually from New York. We have another applicant who's a licensed vendor now, who's based in New York. We do have rules in place that talk about, one of the reasons why they have to have to come up with a reserve and a bond plan that gets approved is so if they fail to pay their taxes, the state has access to ensure that the taxes are paid. There's also caveats in the rules that talks about failing to pay those taxes can result in basically the revocation of the license as a whole. So we have looked at that and we do have some mechanisms in place if that arises. So far, we haven't had any issues with it. As it stands today, I think we've got maybe five, five of our vendors are out-of-state vendors. We have two of them in New York, one of them's in Georgia, one's based out of Nebraska, and one's based out of South Dakota. So we do have several vendors that are based out of state and so far, we haven't had any issues.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Cavella.
Director Laramendi, are these funds in a deposited account in Wyoming? Their bond and what have you?
President Broussard, Commissioner Curra, they're not, and they're not required to be under rule. It just shows that they just have to provide us with their bond account plan and then proof of those funds available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Dan, yep, I see your hand.
There, unmuted, excuse me. Mr. Laramendi, I know you'd address the tax issue, but how about the people, the participants who may have won money, but these people are unable to pay them the proceeds of their winnings? Can you address that also, please?
President Broussard, Commissioner Schiffer, there was discussion of that as we were promulgating rules. And I don't remember exactly what happened in that discussion, but I know that ultimately, the decision was made that the rules focused on the tax side of it. You know, we do have mechanisms in place for players and the consumer to file complaints. And then those complaints can be investigated and brought to you all for action. And I'd have to look through the rules. I do believe that there's some caveats that we could use under rule for that. But as far as non-payment specifically goes, the only thing that's addressed in rule is the non-payment of taxes. It may not hurt to consider putting some other non-payment of winnings.
So the payment comes from, in skills games, comes from the facility, right?
Yes, it does. So, and I think that's probably a lot of the reason why we don't have much of an issue with the payment, because the player is getting paid directly from the location. And then the location either reimburses the vendor or they take it out of the machine when they do their drops and they split it up. What we are seeing now, which is very nice, is a lot, if not most of the locations have moved to a ticket redemption terminal to where there's, you know, it's basically an ATM and you play the game, you cash out your ticket, you go, it scans your driver's license, verifies your age, you scan your ticket, and it pays you out. And that makes it much cleaner as well.
And the payouts are under $5,000, if I'm right?
Under $3,000.
Under $3,000, yeah.
Under $3,000.
So, yeah, I mean, it's typically the operator, the location operator's responsibility to make sure. And then I guess if it would not be these folks paying directly, it would be?
Correct. It's usually the operator that pays it and then is reimbursed by the vendor. And now that you said that, that brings up a good point. Because I believe now, a lot of the conversation that we had as we were promulgating these rules, even by stakeholders, was that it was it was more beneficial for the stakeholders to ensure that the players were getting paid because a knock on their license or a loss of their license would cause them way more harm than paying out a $3,000 jackpot. So that was kind of the temperature of even the stakeholders as far as, you know, they would much rather ensure that they were paying the players than getting complaints filed for not paying these small winnings and ultimately losing their license that could cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars in revenue.
Thank you. Dan, does that, does that clear up things?
Well, I mean, in the best, Mr. President, in the best of the world, I guess that's fine. But, you know, if you're talking about a skill game and skill is what creates a winner and people develop those skills to win these games, there's going to be a lot more hits on, you know, the pool that is being invested. And whether or not those, the pool will cover those winnings is a question that I don't think we know the answer to. So I think it's a concern that we should address as we're, one of our obligation is to protect the players here, that they be assured that, that under all circumstances, when they play the game, they will receive any winnings that they're entitled to. And I don't think we should just go on faith that, you know, a company, not specifically talking about this company or any other's company who runs into financial problems, you know, it's going to come back to us that those players possibly would not get paid. So I think we really need to explore this issue. And I'm sorry to bring it up in the context of this application, but I think this is a good example of where the possibilities of those pitfalls could arise. So I just think we need to really maybe look a little further down the road here and, you know, look at it further. But thank you anyway.
Thank you. So in where the rubber meets the road is the bar owner or the facility owner, the truck stop, they're responsible for paying the payout, right, Nick?
Theoretically, yes, the operator is. By rule, both of them are.
Okay, both, all right.
A lot of the responsibilities fall on both the operators and the vendors.
Okay. All right. Any further questions? About the applicant in particular? Or the application? Not seeing any, we will call the vote. All in favor of approving the new vendor license for HungFi, say aye.
Aye.
If there's anyone opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, well, let's do a roll call vote, Nick, for that. If you don't mind.
President Broussard?
Yes.
Vice President Cavello?
Yes.
Commissioner Torgerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiffer?
No.
Commissioner Ritholer?
No.
Commissioner Curra?
Yes.
Commissioner Francisco?
Yes.
Commissioner Wildcat?
Yes.
Mr. President, the yeses have it.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, now we will skip down to item 10. Does anyone need a break? It's only 9:15. We're doing good. All right. If I don't see any hands, so we will go to item number 10, Wyoming Horse Racing. You guys?
President Broussard, item number 10 is a request received from Wyoming Horse Racing for a terminal addition to 5640 High Plains Road in Cheyenne, Wyoming. This request was originally heard before you early last year and was tabled. In your packet, you will see a letter of support from the city of Cheyenne, as well as a unsigned copy of the Laramie County Resolution. You should all now have a printed out copy.
Can you tell me what page?
Sorry, 273.
The packet is?
273.
273.
273. And for those that are not here in person, I put the signed copy in that drive and I also had emailed that out. So you should have a signed copy of the new Laramie County Resolution. The Laramie County Resolution approves the addition of 600 more terminals to this location. That would bring the total to the Swan Ranch property approved, the approved total to the Swan Ranch property to 1,000. I will let Wyoming Horse Racing speak to this and then I can answer any questions as well.
President Broussard, fellow commissioners, Nick Hughes, president of WHR and PRG, the parent company of WHR. Basically, as you will all remember, we did come before you some time ago, the original increase or the original master plan called for 1,400 terminals. At the time, we, that created a bit of a stir. We have looked at it again, not that we wouldn't go to that, but this is a request for an increase by 600 terminals, over and above our 400 licensed capability, to go to 1,000. And here's the reason. The touristic OTB, Swan Ranch, has been fantastically successful, I'm incredibly pleased to say. As an indication, just in December, for that month, we had 24,000 visitations in one month. Even with the weather. And if you want to put that into monetary benefit terms, that equates to $110,000 just from Swan Ranch each to Candy State and City. Now, the issue is, we're maxing out at our current number. We're a touristic location. 76% thereabouts of our play comes from out of state, mostly Colorado, but also other passing traffic. We have to compete against Black Hawk, which in Colorado is the gaming center. They have full-on gaming. They have a multitude of hotels within the gaming facilities. They have several restaurants within the gaming facilities. We already have, obviously, a stage, a really great bar, a good restaurant, a steakhouse. You know, in our current facility. But we need to be able to expand to attract people. One of the biggest issues that we had on New Year's Eve, when we had over just, over 2,000 attendees, just on New Year's Eve, was what about a hotel? We actually took 50 rooms for that night and found we needed more. Because the people from Colorado or out of state, if they're driving through, it's in the back of their mind that they need to get back again. And so we, part of this expansion in terminals, isn't for the sake just of terminals, it's to fund. We're already 25 to 30 million in just on Swan. We're looking to invest another, up to 100 million, just in Swan. In Swan, we would have an expanded gaming facility because obviously, the existing footprint for gaming doesn't facilitate 1,000 units. We would expand that. That would include another, other amenities. But one of those amenities is 150, 200, perhaps even more room hotel. We're talking about a larger size theater, a true theater, various restaurants and meeting spaces, stroke mini convention center. Because we've been told by the county and the city that that's something that they're really, really keen on having here, a convention-type facility. But for us to put another 100 million into Swan, we would never get it repaid with 400 units when we're maxing out that 400 units. So we respectfully request that we go back to the request to increase by 600 units to the 1,000. And the last thing I would say is that please don't think tomorrow you're going to see 1,000 units. This thing will take time. It's a major, major expansion. We have the land. We own 36 acres, so we have the land. But we are, it's going to be in bite-sized chunks. So we would continually update everybody with, for example, perhaps going from 400 to 600, 600 to 800, 800 to 1,000. We're not going to go suddenly, you know, 600 odd more units overnight. And again, as we can see by looking out the window, we want to get this done as quickly as possible. All our analysis from third-party independents, which I think we've already given as part of the package, show the need for the expansion and the need for a hotel. And with that, respectfully, you know, if there's any questions, please ask.
Thank you, Nick. Do we have any questions for Wyoming Horse Racing?
President Broussard, also included in your packet is the updated feasibility study that takes into account this growth. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, I want to peruse through that real quickly.
The GGHM?
That is correct. Yep.
All right, any questions? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Torgensen, I see your hand.
Actually, Commissioner Wildcat had her hand up first.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Wildcat. My bad.
It's okay. Thank you, President Broussard. The question I had actually was, I know you said it's not going to happen overnight, but what is the timeframe that you're looking at adding these terminals? It sounds like you're going to be doing future building as well. So what are you, what's the timeframe? Are we talking months out? Are we talking a year or so out? What are you, what are you looking at in regards to that?
Your little button, sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Wildcat. I mean, I'll tell you our experience at Swan. GC, our local subcontractors of 80% of all the work done to date has been by Wyoming companies. They all told us a year, took us two. And looking out the window, you'll understand why. We believe that it's if all things align perfectly with supply, no issues there, if if the weather really plays to our advantage, it could be 18 months to two years. We've also said, with some significant impacts of weather, we could lose two, three months where we're literally at standstill, especially with the infrastructure. So it could be three years. But, you know, we're hoping not. So I would think 18 months to two years if all the stars align.
Thank you.
President Broussard, if I could just add to that. You know, there's a process. First phase would be to get the architectural plans developed. And there's phases to that engineering-wise and so forth, interior design. Then we would do the bidding out for all that work. And then eventually, we'd start construction. So there's at least a six-month lead time just to do the plans and so forth. So just to give you some perspective.
Thank you, Commissioner Wildcat. Did that satisfy your question? Oops.
Yeah, yeah, actually, it did. But I just kind of wanted to follow up on that. I don't know if Nick would be the one to answer this, but currently, how many terminals does Wyoming Horse Racing approve for? And how many are currently active?
Pick a Nick. Any Nick can answer that.
President Broussard, Commissioner Wildcat, Wyoming Horse Racing is currently approved for 2,204 terminals. Of that, 890 are active. A large reason for that is because there has been 1,036 terminals approved for the Evanston project that is currently under construction. So that accounts for well over half.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny, you have a follow-up or? All right. Commissioner Torgensen, you go ahead with your question.
Well, Nick already answered part of it there, Mr. President. But I guess another question I would ask, and I think I know the answer to this, but these permits are actually tied to an address, correct? Like non-transferable addresses?
President Broussard, that is correct. And actually, the county resolution also even ties it further to that address. The county resolution is location-specific. So it's that address, the 5640 High Plains Road, would be permitted for 1,000 terminals, that address.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so I don't think we have a motion, do we? No, so who has a hand? Dan? Dan, go ahead.
President Broussard?
President Bouchard, I'm kind of a little vague on how this thing works. So you all are going to put in 300 hotel rooms, and the additional machines are going to go into that part of the facility, into the hotel part of the facility, or the theater part of the facility, or you're just going to add on to the existing gaming area where you're going to place the, where, I guess the question is, where are you going to place these extra machines? Thank you.
Commissioner Schiffer, yes, we're going to build an addition to the existing gaming, and then the hotel would be separate, although obviously right next door. But the actual additional terminals would be in the gaming facility that would be expanded, and then separately, there's a standalone hotel with the meeting rooms, et cetera, et cetera.
President Bouchard, if I may. Commissioner Schiffer, if you look at page 286 in your packet, it'll show the floor plan layout, and that, this section would connect to the existing building, and this is just the gaming floor for those terminals. And then off of this is where the theater and the hotel would be built outside of this.
It'd be, I think, out of curiosity, it'd be great to see the whole picture. I'm looking at 286. Is any of this picture exist, some of that existing? That's all new that's on here? Okay.
President Bouchard, and I actually have, it's their first rendered, so I'm sure they have changes to it, but in the, I think it was the March meeting last year, they had supplied the plans with the hotels and other places. I'll recirculate that so you can see.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions on Zoom? Any questions here? If not, we will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the additional 600 terminals for Wyoming Horse Racing.
Thank you, Commissioner Torgensen. Do I have a second?
Mr. President, this is Bull. I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Bull, thank you. All right, we will open up for further questions or discussions before the vote. Dick, you have a question? Anybody, anything? All right, not seeing any more questions, we will call the vote. All in favor of approving, I have number 10, this 600 additional units at 5640 High Plains Road. State aye.
Aye.
If there's anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. Appreciate it, fellows. All right. Does anyone need a break yet? Not seeing any? We'll call the vote. No, no, I'm good. All right, we'll move on to item number 11, Cowboy Racing.
President Bouchard, item number 11 is a request from Cowboy Racing LLC to amend the previously approved 2025 race dates. In your packet, you should have a copy of the new map, or I'm sorry, map calendar that shows the dates. Cowboy Racing is requesting to run September 24th and 25th, which is a Wednesday and Thursday, and then October 3rd, 4th, and 5th, 10th, 11th, 12th, and 13th, 17th, 18th, 19th, the 24th, 25th, 26th, and 27th, for a total of 16 days at the end of the meet. This request is in support or supported by WABRA. The Horsemen's Group had talked to Cowboy Racing about the overlapping race dates and the struggles that that causes. So this was Cowboy Racing's attempt to try to mitigate that, and with this, we would have no overlap. We would run through the end of October. And I'd stand for any questions on this request. So would they.
Okay. You guys have a presentation or anything before we start battering you?
Good morning. Scott Derudy with First Racing. I'm here with Will Edwards of Principal and Cowboy Racing. First of all, thank you for hearing us this morning. We were originally, when you go back to talk about the date situation, we were asked, sort of in a vacuum, to submit what dates, you know, would be the ones we wanted in a perfect world. And we did that, and we very much appreciate this commission granting those dates. What those dates resulted in, however, was our entire meet pretty much being overlapped. The beginning of our meet overlapped with Wyoming Downs for a couple of weeks, I believe, and then the bulk of our meet was overlapped with Sweetwater Downs. We told you at that meeting where those dates were granted that we realize we're the new entrant into the marketplace, it's incumbent upon us to work with others in the industry and make sure, one, we're being good partners, and, two, we're sort of fitting into the program as it existed before we showed up on the scene. With that background, we did engage in a dialogue with principals from both Wyoming Downs and Sweetwater Downs, very cordial discussions, very professional discussions. We came away from those discussions with a clear understanding that they were pretty happy with the dates they had and didn't particularly want to move, and we understood that and respected that. At the same time, we were in discussions with the Horsemen's Organization, who made clear to us that it was their very strong preference not to have a lot of overlap in a perfect world. They wouldn't want any overlap. We recognize this commission has stated, through Executive Director Laramundia at one of the past meetings, that, you know, you guys would do what was necessary to fulfill your role in an overlap situation, but that does cause stress on you and difficulty on the commission. So taking all of that into account, we sat down and we said, what can we do, at least in this year? And we're not saying these, you know, we want these to be our dates forever, but at least for this year, what can we do to accommodate all these varying interests and desires? And if we were to run a meet without any overlap and start after Sweetwater Downs, we had a concern that that, first of all, October may not be the best time in the world for us to run our race meet. It's workable, but it may not be the best. But if we, if we started after Sweetwater Downs concluded, that would push us all the way into November. We'd be running Halloween weekend, we'd be running against the Breeders' Cup weekend in the first weekend in November. That just seemed like too much. So being a little bit creative and also recognizing that this is our first year of racing, that there's going to be, as in any new business, kinks to work out, we said, what if we were to open with a little bit, I'll call it a soft launch. And when I say a soft launch, the racing will be Class A racing, it'll meet all the requirements and conditions and safety protocols. But from a public standpoint, it would probably have very limited public accessibility. It would be nice for us to be focused 100% on racing and not at the same time trying to figure out how do we get, you know, public in and out and serviced and all that. So we said, why don't we do a launch on September 24th and 25th, which is a Wednesday, Thursday? It'll be, you know, full Class A racing, but we probably, as I say, would have very limited public access to the facility. We would then allow Sweetwater Downs to conclude their meet on their final weekend. It would give us a full eight days to address any issues or concerns that came up in our first couple of days, make any changes in protocols, and then also prepare for our public opening on Friday, October 3rd. So that's the theory and the reasoning behind what we have submitted. We did, as I say, talk with, it was previously mentioned, talk with WABRA, and they're supportive of this, so that's the background, and we respectfully request approval of this.
Thank you. Anything? Appreciate it. So my quick question, the way it stands now is that we'd only need one set of stewards?
President Bouchard, we could run the same group of contract employees, so stewards, licensing, safety inspector. As long as those people are willing, that it's, this is going to be a six-month season, and it's going to be every weekend for six months.
So they, for that one week in September, the third week in September, they just have to run the?
They could, yeah. And we actually looked at the mileage to see if that was doable. It's, you know, it's a couple-hour jog down 80.
That's nothing for Wyoming.
Nothing.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions before we make a motion? Go ahead.
Yeah. Commissioner Rithaler had a question.
Yes, thank you. So when does, if you start on the 24th, when is the track inspection be done then? When would, when do we get in and inspect the track? Maybe that's more for Nick.
President Bouchard, Commissioner Rithaler, so we currently have the RFP out for the track inspections, but we would, it would be our goal to have the track inspection done about two to two and a half weeks prior to that September 24th date.
Did you already have them scheduled at a certain time, or did that?
No, not yet.
You can move them. You can move them. That's what I was thinking.
As soon as we can get the RFP, so it's out right now for bids, once we get that done and award the bid, then we can start working with the vendor to schedule those dates. But our goal is to try to have them done about two to two and a half weeks prior to the first date.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Cactus, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is addressed to you guys. So the first two days would be with no public at all or just very limited?
Mr. President and Commissioner Cavelo, that decision has not been entirely made. It would most be on a limited basis, potentially not at all, subject to, you know, as long as this commission would be okay with that. Again, we think it would be nice to focus just on the racing for the first two days to make sure everything, you know, goes off perfectly and then bring the public in following that.
To be determined. Yep.
So just a follow-up. So Nick and Mike, does that present any kind of problems with regards to their requirements for racing? Those two days would then fit through the normal days? There's no problems there? I don't, I don't want to approve this, and then later on, there's some little caveat like, oops, we didn't think about that.
Like internally, you mean, for us? Is the Wednesday, Thursday create a problem?
No, does, no, well, does it create a problem for the 16-day requirement of racing?
Is there a requirement for spectators? Is that, is that the question?
Yeah, I mean.
I got you.
So I think we had.
Does this require, does this cause any kind of a problem for them?
Give me, give me just a couple of minutes to look at something.
Mr. President, while he's looking at that, I would certainly want to say, as I couched it earlier, it's all subject to the requirements of this commission. So if we need to have public access and public onsite to meet the requirements of our license, we'll absolutely do that. In that case, it would be billed as a soft launch. We would be promoting a grand opening, you know, later on, but public would be available. If you tell us that's not necessary, then so be it. Either way, we'll comply.
It's a business. It's not really, it's not our area of expertise, but we have a hand. Commissioner Torgensen has a hand. So Nick, take your time. We'll, we'll ask some more questions. Commissioner Torgensen, go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not so much a question as, I just want to, I guess, voice some appreciation to these guys for going out there and sitting down and having the conversations with the other operators and helping resolve this, because we knew that it could potentially cause a problem. I do believe down the road in the future, if we keep growing, that maybe, hopefully someday we'll have enough horses that we can have overlapping dates and still keep them, still keep plenty of horses there. But I just appreciate that these guys took it upon themselves to go have those conversations.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you for the comment. Anything else? You know, if you have a year like we had this year, it was beautiful in October. Dan, go ahead. I see you, Dan.
Thank you, President Bouchard. I guess my question would be with regards to the 100-day rule. If you don't have the public wagering at the two soft days, the 24th and 25th, what effect does that have on the 100-day rule if by some chance it's not waived at that point? Thank you.
Thank you. The 100-mile rule, I think. Any comments or questions you want to?
President Bouchard, some of these questions might take a little more time than, unless you want to just sit here. The one concern that I have, and I can work with Mr. Kahler on this, if it's not open to the public and there's no paramutual wagering, is it then a paramutual event, and does it fit the guidelines of the Six-ounce Chase? So I'm trying to, as quickly as I can, look through to see if there's anything that jumps out. But that doesn't mean, like as Mr. Derudy said, that you couldn't grant the dates, and then if, if it needs to be open to the public, that's, it is what.
Yeah, we could get, we can answer that question in detail later. So it'll, it will be an approval pending the answer regarding spectators.
President Bouchard, I think that, I think it would just be approval of the amended dates, and then as we get closer to it, and Mr. Kahler and I can look through that stuff, we can work directly with Cowboy Racing to let them know.
But my assumption is you will have tote people and everything in?
Mr. President, we would have every intention that it would be a paramutual event. Believe it or not, horsemen have been known to wager on occasion, so we would have them at the facility, and there will be a tote up and operating and taking wagers, yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll tell you what, we will, we will eagerly await the answer to that question. Do we have other questions before we proceed?
President Bouchard? Yep. With these dates, knowing that October can not be great, even though we're in January and it's just starting, are you, are you all prepared for inclement weather in October? If it turns nasty in mid-October?
If the weather's any indication of what we had this year or the prior year, if you remember our previous application for 2024 had race dates in October, and we were expecting, the weather in October's been actually pretty mild in some cases. And so I, we're pretty optimistic that it's going to cooperate with us. Sometimes, you know, May, it can get pretty crazy, too, you know, so.
Yeah, no doubt. All right, thank you. Do we have other questions from the commission staff or anyone in general? Okay, at this point, we will entertain a motion to approve the date changes.
President Bouchard, so you'd be looking for a motion to amend the live event permit application for the calendar year 2025?
Thank you. Do we, anyone would like to make that motion?
Commissioner Schiffer here, so moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Schiffer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Torgensen, seconded, thank you. All right, we'll open it up for questions, comments. Got it? None? All right, thank you. So everyone in favor of amending the dates, say aye.
Aye.
If there's anyone opposed, say no. All right, thank you, guys. So I will take a, we'll be back at 10 o'clock. How's that? It's, I have 9:45, so 15 minutes to do what you'd like. Nick, would you like to call the rule? Call the, call the meeting back in order or to order? I'm here.
Vice President Cavelo?
Here.
Commissioner Torgerson?
Here.
Commissioner Bowe?
Present.
Commissioner Schiffer?
Here.
Commissioner Ritholer?
Here.
Commissioner Curra?
Here.
Commissioner Francisco?
Here.
Commissioner Wildcat? Mr. President, everybody is returned.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item 12 Alpha, General Rule Discussion, Chapter Eight, Section Six. Presentation.
President Broussard, so this item was a request to be put on the agenda to have some discussion about, after the meeting on the 23rd. I've put together a short presentation that I'll go over and then we can open it up with the discussion if that would please you.
So that pleases us. I think if you want to go, we will, we will have some discussion, opening discussion, but we will try to, we will try to limit the discussion to maybe 15 minutes of this. All right, Nick, go ahead.
President Broussard, I just got to get the, my, my screen shared here so everybody can see exactly what I'm looking at here. Yeah, that's. There we go. President Broussard, so this all stems from the, the appeals that were done on December 23rd, and there was questions raised about the Breeders Award Program. The purpose of the Wyoming Breeder Award Program is to promote and, to promote the improved breeding and development of the horse industry in the state of Wyoming. The program offers an exceptional opportunity for owners, breeders and stallion owners of accredited Wyoming-bred horses to earn significant monetary award incentives while serving as the backbone to a valuable agriculture industry in the Cowboy State. The Wyoming Gaming Commission is a regulatory agency that serves as the official registrar and administrator of the Wyoming bred program. The commission is tasked with always ensuring the integrity of the program rules and the welfare of the horses and the participants at all times. The current rule, Chapter Eight, Section Six, Roman numeral six and seven, states, A, a mare owner shall certify the location where a mare is physically located and where the mare is going to foal. If different from the certified location, the certification shall be submitted to the commission. The mare owner shall notify the commission in writing at least 24 hours prior to any movement, whether in-state or out-of-state, for any non-emergency purpose. Owners shall notify the commission of emergency movements as soon as reasonably possible and provide the commission written verification of a medical emergency from a licensed veterinarian. Mares moved from their certified location to another location without proper notification shall have their accreditation suspended and must be reaccredited to return to the program. This suspension shall be for the remainder of the current breeding season through the end of the next breeding season. This requirement is identical for the stallions and the donor and recent mares as well. This rule was implemented to ensure that the Wyoming bred registrar can track real-time, the real-time location of every Wyoming bred equine participant and for the field agents to locate and verify the location of the horses. Also to continue to promote breeding and the development of the horse racing within the state of Wyoming and to prevent participants from being moved out of state when open and ensure the integrity and the purpose of the Wyoming bred program. The previous rule stated, the mare owner shall notify the location where a mare is permanently domiciled and where the mare is going to foal. A mare may leave the state of Wyoming for breeding, medical sale and racing purposes without losing its accreditation, provided the mare returns to the state of Wyoming each year before August 15th. If an accredited Wyoming-brewed mare permanently moves out of the state or fails to properly notify the state bred registrar when leaving, she will lose her accreditation. notify the state bred registrar when leaving, she will lose her accreditation and must be re-accredited to return to the program. The issues that we ran into under the previous rules were that horses were allowed to be moved at any time between any location without any notification to the Wyoming bred registrar. It was nearly impossible to ensure the integrity of the program as the commission was unable to ascertain the location of the participants or if they were even in the state of Wyoming. There was no notification required for in-state movements, and the rules also stated that if a mare permanently moves out of state or fails to properly notify the state bred registrar when leaving, she will lose her accreditation and must be re-accredited. However, the rules did not define properly notify. Hundreds of man-hours and miles are spent tracking down horses every year. These are just a couple of, of real-life examples, and I could give you many more. In 2021, agents were completing Wyoming bred inspections across the state to ensure participants were, at that time, permanently domiciled within the borders of the state of Wyoming. An agent arrived in southwest Wyoming to verify the location of several Wyoming accredited brood mares. Upon arrival in late August, the agent was told that the mares in question were not at that location, but instead were being summer pastured on a, on the southwest side of the state, about 357 miles away and a five-hour drive. A week later, the same agent went to the other location where the horses were said to be. When they got there, they were told that the horses weren't there and in fact had been moved back to the other location that he was previously at. So two weeks later, the agent went back to the original location and lo and behold, the horses were there. The suspicion was that the mares in question weren't even in the state of Wyoming. These mares were owned by a participant that lives out of state, but since at that time there was no in-state movement notices required, the agent couldn't substantiate their submission, and now these mares could have babies that are earning monetary rewards for horses that are technically disqualified. I'm not going to go through the second example, it's exactly the same. This happened when I started in 2019, 2019, 2020, 2021, up until 2022, we had this all, all summer long, this is kind of what we, we had dealt with. This is kind of the history of what changed. After the 2021 inspection season, agents brought their concerns with the rules and the suspicions that they were finding. During the May 14th, 2021 meeting, these concerns were brought to the commission as a whole. During the July 9th, 2021 meeting, the commission was presented with draft language, replacing the word permanently domiciled to physically located, and creating a re-accreditation process. This also addressed the requirements for notice of all movements. No action was done at this meeting, just some discussion. During the November 19th, 2021 meeting, the commission gave staff direction as to the proposed rules and some changes in language were made. During the March 30, 2022 meeting, a motion was made in second to proceed forward with the proposed rule changes. June 23rd, 2022 meeting, a motion and second were made to have the Attorney General's Office review the proposed rule changes, which was done. And then in August 2020, or August 23rd, 2022, the, a motion and second were made on the proposed rules to move them forward. From September 16th, 2022 to November 5th of 2022, the rules were in public comment. No public comments were received. The rule changes were formally adopted by the commission on January 31st, 2023. After the adoption of the rules, the Wyoming bred registrar sent multiple emails to all the participants regarding the rule changes. This was prior to us utilizing what we now have Constant Contact. On January 31st, 2023, the notice forms were changed to, changed the language from permanently domiciled to physically located. On February 7th, 2024, a banner was placed on the Wyoming bred page of the website stating that all applicants, it, it is the applicant's responsibility to understand the rules for Chapter Eight, Section Six. A complete set of rules can be found using the links herewith. During the 2023 season, which starts August 15th, agents found numerous people that were unaware of the rule changes. Even with all of the emails that went out and the, the rule process with this one took months and months. During 2023, a lot of the agents, we kind of used that as an education year. We didn't issue a lot of suspensions, we were finding horses out of compliance, and we used that time to really educate people of the current rule and the requirements to notify the commission of those movements. October 16th, 2023, another notice was sent out via Constant Contact and posted on our, the commission's Facebook page. It's important to remember that all of the rules are available in multiple locations on our website and from the Wyoming Secretary of State's website. Since the adoption, multiple changes have been made to the forums and the website to ensure ease of understanding and use, including the requirements, are in big red letters on the main page. As things are brought to the attention of staff, changes, if at all possible, are implemented as soon as possible. The reason why this rule is so important, in 2024 this year, the Breeders Award Program is going to award more than $8.6 million in breeder funds. In 2013, when the commission first took over this program, it was $46,000. It's an 18,000% increase in funds. And now with the way that the rules are written, if people are getting paid, are receiving monetary awards for horses that are ineligible, it is technically criminal theft. It's fraud. So it is important for, for the commission and the integrity of the program to be able to locate these horses at any time. With that being said, internally, we have a criteria that we go by, and, and staff and the agents attempt to be as reasonable as possible. We understand that there's extenuating circumstances, that, you know, there's been times that we have found that we've showed up and we tried to call and lo and behold, we have the wrong number. So when we find out that we have the right number, we're able to get ahold of people and we, we get things kind of addressed. So if an agent shows up to a location and they're told, which is, this is the one that's most common, we show up and they're like, horse isn't here. That's pretty easy for us because under the rule, it says that it shall be suspended if it's not there, it's suspended. If we show up at a location and we can't find the horse, we always try to contact the owner and say, I'm here, I don't know where your horse is at. If we can make contact with them, usually what happens is we just tell them, especially because I know this had come up in, in the December meeting, we have multiple ranches that have hundreds of thousands of acres, and they have pastured horses. It's, I don't have time, we had 880 horses to check this year. It's, it's really simple for us to tell the owner, go find the horse, take a picture of that horse and send it to us. Just make sure you do it within 24 hours. If you can send us a picture of that horse in 24 hours and we can verify by the picture, which there's ways to do that with GPS to see exactly where the horse is, we're not going to suspend it.
And these are concessions, things we're not required to do. These are things we.
These are things that we are, correct, we are not required to do. The rule, the rule is, is clear that says if the horse is not where it's at, it shall be suspended. But these are things that we do because we do understand that there's extenuating circumstances. One of the other things that, you know, a lot of people use these horses. They're not just, you know, it's not just a pasture horse that just sits there. Which, and that's great, please use your horses. If these are participants, use your horses. If we show up and we don't see the horse, all you have to do is make sure you answer the phone because we'll try to leave messages, call our office and let us know because there's things that we can do to ensure that horses aren't being suspended. The problem that we have is if we try to make contact, contact is not returned, and we've tried that multiple times, we have no idea where the horse is at. So under the rule, we have no choice but to suspend the horse. One of the other ones that we have, let's see, so the four is, let's see, if they're, if we show up and they're not there, or we're told they're not there, if we show up and we can make contact, we do the GPS photos. If we can't make contact, we will come back to the office and verify everything that we have through the file that, of the horse that they submitted. The application will go through their phone numbers that they put on their forms, and we'll try that. And then if we, let's see, the last one is, if the contact information that we have is incorrect, we just correct all of that in our system and then we attempt contact again. So that, that's just kind of a brief overview of this program and why, why the rule was written the way that it is now. I know that there, you know, it seems that the two-year suspension is harsh. The problem is, the reason we went away from a one-year suspension was the vast majority of the time, the horses that were being found in non-compliance were open horses. They were not pregnant. So they were suspended for one year, it did nothing. It was cheaper for them to take their horse across state lines, out of state, get caught, and then the next year pay $200 to put it back in than it was to leave the horse in the state of the, in the state of Wyoming, pay for Wyoming vets, pay for Wyoming feed, pay for Wyoming land than it was to pay the $200. That was a, a big reason for the two-year change in the rule because the vast majority, and actually I'll give you the numbers, so I pulled all the numbers for this year. So this year, beginning August 15th, we inspected 876 horses. Of those 876 horses, we suspended 45 horses, which means it equates to a 95% compliance rate against the rules. Of those 45 suspensions, we got four appeals. Also, since the 15th of August, Brandy has processed 860, or 168, transport notices. So these are people that are moving their horse from this pasture to this pasture or from this pasture to breeding here or wherever the case may be. So we've tried very, very hard to, you know, continue to educate people and send stuff out as often as we can. You know, I don't know what else staff can do to ensure people. I will say that we have also, as we've been scouring the website and updating forms, if you go to our website now and you apply, fill out an application for a Wyoming bred horse, we've done the same thing now with that application that we've done with skill games and online sports wagering and bingo, to where it has all of the rules for that program in, contained in the application, and you have to initial every page of rules to ensure that you have read and understand the rules. I'd stand for any questions if you have anything and.
Sure. Thank you, Nick. If you have a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Nick, how in depth, how detailed is it to have to take a GPS picture? Does any picture have GPS information on it or have you been able to, once somebody asks, everybody has a phone that's capable of doing that, correct?
That's correct, yeah. And actually, we, we've had a few people that their phones are, don't have the capability of, of, it's the metadata that's in photo because they don't have GPS chips. However, now, our team has been at these locations so many times, I can look at a picture of a horse and I can tell you if that horse is where they said that horse is at. In fact, right before I had started, what kind of started this whole thing was, the investigators, the former investigators had asked for some photos of some horses, and they received photos of the horses, and the background of the photo of the horses was to a state to the south, and they knew it because they had been to the property before. So they drove and they crossed state lines and sure enough, they found a plethora of horses that were across state lines. But now, yeah, we can extract the metadata and we can see where that picture was taken, and if it's in that area of where it's supposed to be, then they're fine. It's, it suffices. And some of these areas, you know, actually, we have one very far north that there's like three horses up there. It takes more time for an agent to drive up there and spend two days to check three horses. Those three people, almost every year, they just send us pictures. Like, we call them, I need a picture like, right now, so I can verify that your horse is there. And they go, they send us a picture and we can verify by date, time and GPS location that the horse is where it's supposed to be.
Thank you, Nick. Any other questions for Nick?
President Broussard.
Yep, and then, and then Torgerson will be after Commissioner Wildcat.
Okay, thank you, President Broussard. The, I just have just the one simple question. Our, our rules in regards to this are pretty much similar and in line with industry standards,
President Broussard, these rules, they, they really are tailored to Wyoming. There's other states that, like, their breed programs are actually more strict. If you look at a state like Louisiana, Louisiana actually has, they have one set of guidelines for certain residents and another set of guidelines if you're an out-of-state participant and, but ours are kind of a, a mesh of everything that really works for Wyoming. From trial and error and, and hitting the ground running and trying to figure this program out, especially as it's grown, this is, this was kind of the direction that staff thought was best. Thank you.
Commissioner Torgerson?
Yes, Mr. President. I guess one of the things that kind of, I've a little bit changed my mind on a lot of this, part of it is after listening to Nick's presentation, but also that letter that they got from Wabre, I think was quite a statement about that most of these breeders are in favor of this, of this program right now.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not denying that it takes some effort on, on the part of the owner, but the effort's worth it, you know, and, yeah, I'd like to keep the rules as simple as possible, and I just think as the owner should know the rules in great detail and follow them and will have no problems. Hopefully, we'll have no suspensions and everybody will have their horses where they belong. Any other questions? Commissioner Rithaler?
I've really a question.
Okay, statement, go ahead.
Well, they push hard.
Yeah, you gotta push.
So, no, I just, you know, it was a split vote when we had the meeting, but my vote was, if you have rules, you gotta live by them. And if you don't like the rules, you need to change the rules. But I don't know how you change them and make them much, how, how, I don't know how we could change them. I know three and a half miles seems like a harsh punishment, but it's pretty easy to tell them, I got the horse someplace else. So, and that, that was the reason for my, my vote to stay with the suspension was we have rules and it's kind of like a, a police officer can't make that decision when you arrest somebody that I think it was called for.
Yeah.
The laws of law.
Yeah. It's a man, it's a voluntary program. So the other option, if you don't like the rules, is not to be in the program. So that's, yes. Okay, sorry, Mr. Spiver, you need to, you'd like to make a comment? This is a good time.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to thank Nick for making that presentation, and as Commissioner Torgerson and Commissioner Rithaler has kind of echoed, I don't think that some of the commissioners or a lot of the audience actually knew how the rules came into effect and why. An excellent presentation. Also, we're glad that the letter from Wabre did show up and was well receptive, receptive. And also, trying to help on this, Wabre sends out notifications several times a year just reminding the horsemen to take care of, take care of their transfer notices and stay within the, the laws of the commission and the Wyoming bred program. Thank you.
Thank you. Who, who's the other? Okay, Commissioner, sorry, Mr. Joyce, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, unaccustomed as I am to public speaking, I will like to say a few things. You know, and then again, I want to commend Mr. Laramendi on his presentation. That was very, very thorough and absolutely 100% accurate, accurate how we got here. My own, my only problem with the rule is one word, shall. And it doesn't give the commission any kind of leeway to. to, you know, help somebody that's made an honest mistake. And, you know, with all the other penalties we have in our rulebook about first-time offense, second-time offense, when it comes to medications or breaking the rules of racing, this doesn't allow that. The intent, I believe, of the Wyoming bred program and these rules is to benefit the state of Wyoming by having these horses domiciled in the state. And what, but what, what has happened though, I believe, is that, that the punishment is, you know, doesn't fit the crime, in my humble opinion. And again, I hear you loud and clear that if, if you don't like it, you know, you need to change it. And, and I will be putting in a, you know, a recommendation for rule change here this year. But that being said, if you, if you want to get rid of a unjust law, just enforce it vigorously. And I commend the commission and their staff for enforcing this vigorously. However, however, I would tell you that there are several cases where a horse has been several miles away, or in my case, a horse was 24 miles away from the said location, okay? And we could have proved that it was in the state of Wyoming. And I believe all these rules really, and the examples that Mr. Laramendi has cited, is people sending their horses out of state and then trying to bring them back in. So I would tell you that, and I appreciate the time and effort that's put in. And so if there is some kind of fine in between for first-time offense or something like that to compensate the state, right now, I have a horse that's, that's in full and is out of the program. And that, that's going to cost me, just on her boarding alone, $15,000 up until the time I get her back in the, in the program. And again, any future, you know, monies I might have, you know, gotten from the breed program from that foal. It'll be a Wyoming bred horse. It just won't be in the, in the, in the program. And so, you know, it was an honest mistake. It wasn't fraud. We weren't trying to steal anything criminally. So anyway, period, paragraph, turn the page. I'll get off my soapbox. I just wanted to, to let you know that I, I just think that there should be some discretion allowed to the commission on certain cases. Because certainly, I could have proven to whoever the investigator was at that time exactly where that horse was, 24 miles away within the state. And so, again, I, I, I understand that we don't want to waste their time and money, but I'm happy to pay a fine, but to try to keep the horse in. So with that.
Eugene, I have a quick look. This is going to be tough for you. A yes or no answer, if you could. When you moved that horse, did you not know the rules stated you had to call and let us know that you were moving the horse?
Do you want my honest answer?
Most times.
Yeah, it, it just didn't, I was, I was counting on someone to do that, to send that in, and it didn't happen.
Thank you for the honesty. I appreciate your comment. Do we have any other comments or questions? I see Dan pushing a button.
Yeah, President Broussard, Mr. Joyce kind of summarized what I was going to say. I think the penalty for individual, and we're all subject to lapses of the mind and having other things going on in our world that we don't always attend to things the way we want to. The idea of the rule was to stop people from taking their horses out of state. And I don't think that the rule as stated deals with horses that are moved in-state and the person in responsible doesn't properly notify the, the, the breeding, the breeding person. But, so I think, you know, we really have to consider the penalty for those individuals is really extreme. I, I think Mr. Joyce saying $15,000 is a very conservative number for someone who moved a horse 20 miles, I mean, and was in-state. So I really do, I wrote some language I thought would, would do to deal with the in-state issue. I'm sure there's plenty of other ideas of how to write a, a rule like that. And I really think this commission should consider those instances where the horse remains in-state as opposed to the, the purpose of the rule is to keep horses from going out of state. So I think we need to confront that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Commissioner Bowles, you had a question or hand up? Unmute yourself.
Yeah, I did, Mr. President. I, I don't know if I have a lot to add. As I indicated to everybody, you know, I have become less outraged over this issue as, after I read Nick's presentation. But I am concerned, I look at those 45 suspensions, and I'm concerned that we're suspending Wyoming horses. And I just would like to have a way in the rules for people that find themselves as, as Eugene did, for them to bring those cases in front of the council, in front of the commission, and get some relief. You know, I've spent my whole life either trying to enforce rules or, or get some relief from rules. And, and we're just better off if we create some flexibility within the rules to achieve the goals of the program as opposed to just making it easy for the regulatory agency. And so I would like for us to explore some ways to create some flexibility for the commission to deal with these cases. Anyway, that's all I've got to say. And you've heard me enough on this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Brandy, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, President Broussard. Just really quick, I, I think that being the minister of the program and being, being a minister of state bred programs for almost 30-some years now, in my short time on earth, I believe that the rule is not just made to keep, make sure horses go out of state. It's made to make sure that everyone feels comfortable to know that everybody in the program is doing what they're supposed to be doing. Not just Wyoming residents, not being, not discriminating as out-of-state. It's important that they come in. It's important for the ones here in Wyoming as well to be where they, where they're supposed to be. When I took this program on from Wabre, there was no, there was no way to know where these mares were. We worked diligently to, to get a program to where we know exactly where they are, to prove that they are doing what they need to be doing. And I don't care if it's a $50 program or an $8.5 million program. Integrity is what we're here for. And I just believe that if you let people go and you open it up to, instead of the shall to a may, and have them come in front of you, that justice, I mean, I, I don't think people will believe in the program anymore. Some, I mean, how are you going to determine what's, when did you guys become the judges for, for what is right or, oh, this person's story? I feel bad for everybody that gets out, that's up the road. But really, my feeling is the only way to maintain a program and for the commission to show integrity is to treat every horse the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Any other comments or questions?
President Broussard, real quickly, I don't know the circumstances around the other 41 horses that were suspended, but my educated guess at this point in time would be the reason those weren't appealed is because those horses were open. So I understand, you know, the kicking out of horses and we don't want to kick out horses. But my guess is that those 41 are probably open mares. They're not pregnant anyway. And so they're, at least the first year, they're not losing anything. I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Well, thank you. Yeah, and like Brandy said, it's not, it's really difficult for us to determine who made an honest mistake and who, who is trying to fudge it. And it's tough when we have the leeway to try to make those opinions because we would, we will probably make a mistake and let somebody off, or vice versa. So in the end, we'll close this conversation. I'm expecting, like Eugene said, that there'll be some comments regarding rule changes. And we're, and we're welcome to, to those. We'll, we'll entertain all of those and Nick will forward them to us for, for, for us to digest. But yeah, this is a sensitive matter. And I do think going forward, there'll be less suspensions because of what happened this year, for sure. Okay, any, we will close this topic and move on to general rule discussion B. Nick?
President Broussard, the next one is online sports wagering, Chapter 6. Just a quick update, that's in the governor review period. That ends on February 5th. Once he, the governor has signed those, the website and the rules packets will all be updated. And then we'll also, we have a memo ready to circulate to all of the online sports wagering operators to ensure that they're aware of the new changes. Do you want me to keep going?
Sure.
Online sports wagering, Chapters 1 and 8. Those are currently, we're just waiting for the governor's approval to proceed with those. The same thing with the paramutual, Chapter 3. So as soon as we get the governor's approval for, to proceed with those, we'll, we'll start moving those along as well.
Thank you. All right, online, on sport, online sports wagering, Chapter 1 and 8.
Sorry, what was it? Which one was that one?
Did you do 1 and 8? Okay.
Yes, 1 and 8 are combined. They're, yep, correct.
All right, so and you've recovered, we're just waiting on the governor for paramutual, Chapter 3.
Correct. Yep, just waiting for the governor's approval to proceed with those.
Okay, I'm hesitant to say this, but general rule discussion? Do we want to have a general rule discussion?
So the only thing that I have on this is, I guess, just some direction from, from you all. We received recommendations from the safety assessments that were done last year. Many of those things talked about, the commission should maybe implement certain rules to look at. Same thing with the spectrum report. So I guess some just general consensus on what all you would like to do. The other two that we have, Chapter 10 was tabled a while back. So I guess I need to know what you want to do with that. And then HHR rules. So that one is done, that's, that's, that, HHR rules was a recommendation by the spectrum report, but it's also in statute. When I look at it, actually, the statute talks that the commission shall promulgate rules in regards to HHR. Those have been in the works and we have some drafts. I can start preparing those and we can maybe bring one section at a time, if that's what you all would like. Just your direction.
Any comments, any guidance for Nick on the Zoom? No? Okay. Anything, you got a comment?
Yeah. Rules are not our favorite thing, but obviously something that they're very important. I'm wondering if there's a way that maybe in smaller groups or something like that, we could attack these in, in work sessions. I know trying to do rules in these meetings when not necessarily everyone's here with regards to those rules is always the best, but we can't ignore them. We got to continue to push forward.
So in regards to the surveys and whatnot, Nick, in your spare time, just maybe put, just give us a clear outline of the rules that you think and maybe one document, what we should start looking at and what they've suggested. So we could pass that around, start getting our head around the conversation. But that's my suggestion. Any, anybody dislike that? All right. Any other comments from the Zoom to Nick, or guidance to Nick, or the staff in regards to rules? Was there anything in the survey about the topic of, of Chapter 10?
President, President Broussard, the spectrum report, it would be a lot of Chapter 10 and Chapter, so the Chapter 10 that we were working on, there's things that pertain to HHR. But it might be advantageous for us to actually create a chapter strictly for HHR and leave Chapter 10 as live simulcasting and simulcasting, so we can look through that. There's, there's a lot of things outlined in HHR rules that, that we can go. I'll, I'll put together some bullet points on, for all of them. I know that we already have kind of the safety assessment recommendations. And we can start going through those to see what applies and maybe what doesn't apply.
Okay.
One of the other ones that, you know, we've been, for, for a long time now, it's actually, and I should have looked sooner, it's ADW rules. So advanced deposit wagering is, is one of these things that, based on some current, or recent conversations that I've had with people across the nation, everybody is struggling with ADWs. It is, we have very little in place for rules. All of our ADWs are out-of-state ADWs. We have an ADW, what would you call it, conglomerate that is licensed as an ADW. And then they've got multiple white, white paper ADWs that they operate under, but they only have to get one license. But they're operating four or five different ADWs in the state. And realistically, they should probably have four or five ADW licenses for each one. But we don't have anything in a rule that really addresses that. Not only that, we also, ADWs have moved, and what we are seeing now is that traditional ADWs, advanced deposit wagering, where you load your account, you sit at your TV, you watch a horse race, and you bet on the horse race like you were at a live track. A lot of these ADW companies now are moving to almost what mimics HHR. But it is live. So it is not, it's, random races are being picked. Your wagers are being placed for you. You don't select what your wagers are. It's just placing it on a live horse and all you're seeing is essentially an online slot machine. And there's nothing currently in, in rule or statute that addresses what an ADW is and what the intent of ADW was. So that might be another one that we should look at because that, that's a problem. That's a problem. One of the states, when, we had had a conversation, I think it was last week, with a vendor. And there was one state that actually had, had lumped in ADW rules into their online sports wagering stuff. I'd have to look through those rules to see what it is. But this new, like iGaming platform for ADW, like it's just coming online. It's been around now for, I don't know, maybe 10 months. It's being pushed out and I don't think a lot of regulators are aware that, because they're assuming that it's an ADW. It was brought to our attention and we started looking at it and we've actually found a couple other ones. We're trying to work through those. I'm sure you'll be seeing stuff on those as we move those forward. We're working with the AG's office on, on trying to get some of these addressed.
Thank you. All right, so yeah, Nick, if, I guess the, if we're talking general rule discussion, generally speaking, rule, my opinion is rules should fix a problem. So if we have a problem, we should, no, we shouldn't hesitate to bring them to the commission. The other side of it, rules shouldn't make a problem. So, you know, it's, we just need to be careful and very diligent about how we, I'm not a big fan of reviewing all the rules annually just to review them. I don't think anybody is. But if they, if there is problems, change in technology. is, but if they, if there is problems, change in technology, of course, you know, we need to try to stay ahead of it. So whatever you see, put it on the agenda and, or at least send it by email so we can look at it prior to the meeting and get our head around it. But things are changing fast, and a lot of things are all changing all at the same time, so thank you for that. Any other comments or questions regarding general rule discussion? I see, Dan, are you?
President Broussard, just quickly, I think maybe Nick kind of went over it, but as I recall, when the company ERMG did the inspections of the, of the racetracks, they came up with a bunch of suggestions on, you know, rules that we possibly should look at, amending or, or adding for, for safety purposes. And I, I think those are pertinent, we need to, we need to deal with those kind of things. So, I, I'm not sure if that was what Nick was alluding to, and maybe he can tell me if that's the case or not, but, I mean, those are, the, the HISA rules seem to have updated a lot of these safety rules, and we as a, without HISA should look at some of those and see if they're appropriate for our racing safety. Thank you.
Nick, do you have?
President Broussard, Commissioner Schiffer, yeah, that is part of the ones from the safety assessments, and I'll start going through those and really narrowing those down and get some stuff to you all for some consideration.
Thank you. All right, so, I don't see a need for an executive session moving forward? No? Okay, our, our next meeting dates are posted, that we're, we have a year in advance of dates. March 21st will be our next one. Anything you want to add to that, Nick?
Real quick, President Broussard, during the March 21st meeting, I'm hoping that it is similar to this one. The one thing that I would like to add, if, with your blessing, or with your awes blessing, is to carve out at least a couple hours to really go through the, the spectrum report. I know we had touched on it after it was kind of submitted, but it was really a high-level overview. I've talked to stakeholders, and I know stakeholders would like to be able to, to open it up and, and express some things to you all as well. My thought was that I could go through it and, and kind of do the same thing with that that I did with the Wyoming bred stuff, and kind of put together like a presentation with bullet points, so we're not looking through 96 pages, page by page. But it, it would probably take a couple hours to, to really go through that. It was a $200,000 report, and we should probably.
Would it make more sense to have a, a completely separate meeting, or like a?
I guess that would be up to you. As it stands, well, it's still pretty early, but as it stands, there, there would be no reason why we couldn't fit it into, to a, like, an afternoon session of a normal meeting.
Okay, well, yeah, again, looking outside, I don't know what March 20, I think it's going to snow on March 21st, my guess.
Birds.
Yeah, I mean, either way, I'm, I'm fine to do a separate meeting on the same day, if, if that makes sense. The commission would prefer to do that. Just a, an educational meeting, is that sort of what we're?
President Broussard, I think it would be, yeah, I mean, an educational meeting, and then, you know, I can start taking points away that, that you all feel important, so we can start developing a, you know, like, a, a five-year strategic plan. What we could do, if you wanted to, is when we notice that meeting and we, and we prepare for that meeting, is we could just make sure that the morning is general commission business, we break for lunch, and then after that, it's, this is what we're going to do. So if you don't want to stick around for a couple hours to, to talk about that, then at lunch, you're good to go.
That's a great idea. I like that, too. Either way, so basically have a, kind of a second meeting in the afternoon, that's clearly, and folks don't have, well, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine with. No, well, today, we have very important business after this meeting, and that is to give Charlie a hug and thank him. So, is that a, forgive me, was it a scheduled party?
It is scheduled, and it is scheduled at 3 o'clock.
Okay.
And since it is scheduled at 3 o'clock, you're welcome to hang out for a few, go have lunch, come back at 3:00. Guess I'll leave that up to you all.
All right. Well, there's no other business or comments, we will close the meeting. All right, thank you, guys, appreciate it. Thank you, guys, on Zoom.
Thank you all.
Thanks, guys, have a good day. Say hi to Charlie for me.
He's right here.
Tell him yourself, he's right there.
He's over here.
Hey, hey, Charlie, sorry, I won't be able to be there for your party.
See you, guys.
Take care, man.